Welcome and good evening. If you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and a good afternoon this evening. Do we have any scouts in the audience this evening? Oh, there you are. If you listen to me, I'm going to introduce yourself. Tell us what badge you're working on and what school you attend.
Uh, I attend high school, senior high school. Uh, my name is Jay Conwell. I'm working on communications background.
Great, welcome. Thanks for joining, especially after school ended. That's even better. Dedication right there. All right, so we will entertain a motion to, for tonight's agenda, to adopt the agenda.
I move that we move, or I move to adopt tonight's agenda.
Okay, so moved in second in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, at this time, the board will go into an executive session where we'll review the performance of the public employee and then we will return in approximately 10 minutes. Yes, okay. We'll be back.
Yeah.
The finals, the finals getting given to.
Yeah, seniors especially. It was like, yeah, if there was something, should have come before. That's like one of my favorites. The, the high school senior comes to the teacher and says, can you please give me a list of all of my missing words? And then the teacher looks at him and says, it's May. And they're like, oh, I didn't know it's on your picture. May, I have a list. Although, we've been doing this for 21 years. 21 years, no shock to have. We let the girls go one time and all of a sudden it's 10 years. I felt, I felt pretty, I mean, I was tired, but. But that really couldn't have gotten her to respond. It was a good cross section it was in, but this whole. Very much the same thing. I mean, I did this in the listening session where I thought it was something.
So we didn't have the whole, we lost them.
Oh, yeah, so the transportation.
So just, just support the teacher added. I can't remember about, she was not my favorite. Oh, right, this is Cheryl. And that, and that's actually, it's a better spot. But yeah, those were the two that was really. People from other schools. Yeah, so instead of a ten or. We haven't had any conversations. For these people, you know what I mean? It's like, it's not all tied up with love. It's like, there's a lot. Exactly. And great levels of teachers are going to have access to that. Teacher, talk to them about what it is. I mean, I think, yeah, it is, it's one of those great solutions on paper. And when you start implementing it, the real. Doesn't really pan out. Question, teacher, it's not one thing. Well, we have media systems, so that's the, that's the position. But we're here for both, but really it's. That's also in the vision. Cause that's, I'd say the way it's. Half, that's what I think needs to be. Half of high school. Well, middle school's a funky thing because they had different titles. They still protect these. And if we're building bottom, we have to. They're, that's what they're. Well, they changed the job.
Once the work is done.
Of the, the question to building. Who's at 20s? That's weird. Oh, you know what? I lived in, it wasn't a bad place. Didn't see it, but sure. They're really nice. Those gave us water bottles. Yeah, so actually, it's like a little perk because my 20 was like a, you know, just kind of a, you're a great teacher.
I'll send them this case door. They say, if this doesn't work for you.
We used to do that instead. We don't want to, because you can only spread out, you know? It's like, we have to keep track of each other. But James, it's like, no. This is the thing, if you like. And, you know, that was on the other side. We are E A. Never going to say they do it in 10, 15. Forever. She must start right.
All right. Sorry for our break there. So the board met an executive session to talk about an appeal of a non-renewal letter to an employee. I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Romino to give you a few more details about that.
So as part of the budget reductions that we have gone through in the district, there was a process that the district followed to issue non-renewal letters and to staff members. Ultimately, we issued, I think 30, somewhere around 30, for a few different reasons. But the decision was made to try to limit the reductions to those impacted by enrollment changes in the district. So we ended up meeting with, I think, three teachers. This one that we're discussing now taught Spanish at Hila High School. And when we went through the reduction process at the buildings and delivered the staffing to the high schools, initially, they, they had to go through a process of looking what classes students had signed up for. And kind of across the district, we saw reductions in Spanish and in some of the other foreign language areas. And I think we had in some of the meetings, students come and advocate for some of those, and other staff members advocate for some of those individuals. In this particular situation, the teacher taught at Hila High School and had the lowest seniority in the Spanish area. So her position ultimately was bumped by a teacher from Legacy High School. The, the individual had taught full-time last year, this current year at Hila. But the number of students that had forecasts for Spanish next year at Hila actually only generated a .6 FTE. So the teacher from Legacy was bumped, bumped her at Hila. And she actually was full-time at Legacy and was reduced to .6 as well. Now, subsequent to that, .2 was added back. And so that teacher is now at Hila as a .6. And then .2 was restored at Legacy High School. But this particular position, we don't see enrollment numbers changing and students forecasted for the high school to have that position brought back. The process that we follow, it's, it's, it's the provisional process. And the agreement was that we would, until the end of August, any, you know, if a Spanish teacher were to leave between now and then, there's still the .2 of a legacy teacher that went from full-time to .8 effectively that would need to be restored before this individual's position. And we certainly, if something changes, would make that happen, even to the point that, I mean, we all heard at the board meeting that this is, it's not a performance issue. She's a very well thought of teacher. And so even part of this, once we get to September, and actually August, end of August, when we start school again, seeing what is the actual enrollment? Did any kids change their schedule? So there, you know, we've got this summer. We've also got fall when things. But as of right now, there isn't a position. This isn't something, what's new this year is because of the budget cuts, the process that we followed was different and went through the provisional, the provisional, the fact that we're following the provisional process, changed the appeal rights. And so she appealed directly to me, which we then brought to the board. In many other years, not just within the foreign language area, but even sometimes within the CTE area. If students don't just sign up, we go through a RIF process and that's a different process than this is, which is why we're doing it this way. So we had moved forward the non-renewal to go ahead and have the board accept it. So that's why we're doing it this way, which is much different, I think, than what I've ever seen and what's happened in the past.
And so August 31st is the last day or the?
August 31st is, yeah, August 31st is the last day of the contract year. And that was the agreement that we had made with EDA in talking through the process, that they would have absolute first rights up through August 31st. It's not to say that as soon as September 1st comes around, now we're, we're ignoring that. I mean, I think she was a well thought of teacher, both within the building and with the students and represented by the support that she had. It has nothing to do with performance. So really, realistically, we probably would see enrollment changes because school starts, what, at 27, 28? I don't remember what day it'd be starting in August. So we'll see that. But sometimes that could last into September. So absolutely, if, if it were to come pat, you know, if it happened that we had something changed, we would, we would be more than interested in bringing her back.
Any questions or comments from any of the board members? I think that's the important thing because since school starts like the 27th, there's a few days there that things can change. As we all know, in a high school, everybody lined up to change their schedules those first few days. So hopefully, you know, it'll work out. Just, we just don't know up until that time.
Right. And it's not kind of normal year, as everybody, I mean, for a lot of different reasons. But I mean, in terms of the budget reductions, there, there have been a lot of things that we've had to do and this is unfortunately another one of them.
But it's the enrollment that's causing the problem.
It's, it's a combination of less kids in the high school and then what did the kids sign up for?
Right, okay.
So hypothetically, if 100 kids were to sign up for Spanish in a school, we'd need to find somebody to teach those 100 kids.
Correct.
That's the idea.
And the process would be that the .2 that's left of the legacy teacher that was bumped to Hila, that would be the first, seniority wise. And then the next would be Kelsey that we're talking about tonight.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? And we'll entertain a motion.
I move that the board accept the superintendent's recommendation to non-renew the employment contract of Kelsey Benton for the reasons provided by the superintendent. And I move that the board chair notify the employee of the board's decision in writing.
All right, so moved in seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay.
We all hope that a bunch of kids decide to take Spanish at the end of the summer.
Absolutely. Yes, yeah, kids. I mean, pretty much over the years and watching the budget, I mean, we're pretty spot on on enrollment numbers.
I would like to think we have.
Yeah, but you never know, right? You never know what kids decide to move or what families are coming to the area.
Right.
So, okay, thank you. All right, so we will go ahead and move on to the board consent agenda. This includes all of our meeting minutes and events that we had over the last couple of weeks. There's a few things regarding Zipton and Marion. We'll entertain a motion for that.
Move that we accept the board consent agenda as presented.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, we'll move on to the superintendent consent agenda. Again, we'll entertain a motion for that.
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
So moved in seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed? All right. Okay, next up is presentation. College career and technical education. Susan, are you coming up for that? Great.
Lori's doing it tonight?
She can do the technology.
Thank you. You're all clapping our fingers in that work, so. Good evening and welcome to our annual plan. As you know, this is a requirement through an RCW that we have a five-year plan, but we actually present it every year. So we do an annual plan every year. So basically, in 2010, I think Victoria may have been the person that was here at that time. We went through and did a strategic plan and aligned it with our district declaration and beliefs at that time. And this is our mission statement. You can see that it's to provide our students with competitive, rigorous, and professional skills and abilities to pursue their future aspirations. So in 2016, we revised it. So we went from 10 goals and kind of condensed it down to six goals. And if you notice, our statement was called Vision 2020. And it's a 10-year plan and 2020 is right around the corner. So we are going to start another kind of revision, working with our district tenants and our staff in August to revise our plan again. So part of the requirements, again, it's an RCW, is that we have, and these are just part of those. If you have your entire document here, it lists all the RCWs. I'm just hitting a few of those. That we align with industry standards. So when we create a new course or we renew a new course, I'll take medical for example. We're required to use not only the state standards for math and science and English, but also the national standards for healthcare. So if it's manufacturing, we use national manufacturing standards as well. We're required to have advisory committees and we have one for each of our nine big program areas. We're required to look at our programs based on exploratory and preparatory. So exploratory courses are more looking at different career options. And then our preparatory programs would be kind of like the pharmacy that you heard about a couple of weeks ago. We integrate with academics. So this is the great place to demonstrate science, math, language art skills through our courses. And then we're required to link with leadership and employability. And the other requirement is that our teachers do a program eval every year. So what we do during early releases, starting in the spring, is we have a template for teachers to go through in white content areas and evaluate their programs. Then they turn that into me and I condense it into one big plan. And in your document, the very back, it's probably kind of small by the time it got out there, is the five-year plan. And we do it year by year. So this particular year, we were focused on STEM and health sciences because all of our programs have to be renewed by OSPI every five years. So that was the focus area, but it also lists what we did with all the other program areas. Next year, we're on the cycle for family and consumer science and American Sign Language. So those will be the areas that we focus on. And then it requires that our general advisory committee, and for Evergreen, we've joined with Battleground in Vancouver. So we have one joint Clark County CTE consortium. So they've already reviewed this in May and signed off on it. And then it comes to you folks to take a look at and approve. So we kind of share this with you each year in order to help our students have more flexibility in their courses. In order to help our students have more flexibility in their courses, we look at course equivalencies, and we actually have 53, if I counted this correctly. So from last year, what changed is we added one more art credit, which was metal design and sculpture class. We added one more fitness, which we designed a new course called Stress Management and Relaxation, which is tied with a PE course. So it's also a two-for-one, so students in a semester will earn a full credit instead of a half credit. We also added world language. We added a early childhood education Spanish immersion, that the lab experience is in preschools, and a early childhood in Spanish immersion that's in elementary schools, and tied with some of our immersion schools. Those also, in the course of a year, this is a year-long program, the students earn two credits because it's co-taught with a CTE and a Spanish teacher. Then we look at our STEM enrollment, and you can kind of see, the blue is two years ago. I'm having a hard time reading the dates, they're 2017-18. The orange is 2018-19, and the green is 2019-20. So our big spike was actually in agriculture and natural resources. With our district goal of equity across classes, we asked our buildings to all run all of our classes. Exception is like metals, which can only run in a couple of buildings because of facility space. So Union added all the animal vet science, environmental science, marine science, et cetera, and we had a huge growth in students selecting those courses. So that's why you see such a spike there. Another piece that we look at is, we're required to identify whether or not there's really a labor market demand for our programs. And so one of the things we do is like a DACOM, and that's Developing Curriculum, that's what it stands for. And I did some training last year, as did my assistant director, Kim Burkhow, and the picture up on the right upper corner is us working in Ohio with a group of water operators to fully define what they do in their job. So you take the experts in the field, and you ask them a lot of questions, a two-day process. You dig out everything that they do, and then you have teachers observe that process to learn what content they might be able to add to their programs. In the bottom right-hand corner is a group of digital arts professionals. So one of the things, when the state did an audit of all CTE programs across the state, they found that courses such as photography didn't have a high industry need. So we kind of went, oh, that's interesting, that's a real high interest by kids. So what do we do? So we brought some experts together from the different digital arts fields, and kind of went through what they do, and they really talked a lot about broadening beyond just photography to more project management, projects that include a lot of different disciplines. So we took all that information, and those people came and presented to our advisory committee and our teachers, and now we're looking at how we might refine some of the work that we're doing in those courses. The other thing that we're really focusing on this year, we've done a lot with internships, but we wanted to expand that. We want to give more kids opportunities that maybe can't do a 90-hour experience. So we just have a few examples. These are the STEM academies. So we have 100 students from Union and about 40 students from Heritage, and they develop lesson plans, and they go out and teach science lessons in the classrooms in the elementary schools. And this year, our Teaching Academy, high school students, join those students, and they're teaching those students how to develop appropriate lesson plans to take out that are age-appropriate to the elementary schools. So that was pretty cool. This is York Elementary, they were newly added this year. And then this is just kind of a list of a lot of the different career connect and learning that we're doing in the district. Part of this is just college visits, that's that top line, CTSOs, those are our student leadership organizations, and you can see some of the career fairs, the luncheon learns, the construction fair, women in trades, girls in STEM, those different activities. One of the goals is to really focus a little bit more on elementary and middle school, so that we start that planning earlier with kids. Here's another example. This is LSW, and this was an internship. We had six students off to the right, those are the Evergreen students that joined, about 10 other students from Southwest Washington. LSW gave them a project of designing a youth center in Vancouver. Not that that's going to be built, but designing that. And two of the students that are in that diagram, they happened to decide that they were going to design a career center. So I grabbed them afterwards, and I said, hey, we're moving our Union Career Center. Would you be interested in doing some surveying on kids and staff and see what they would like to see in the career center? And they said sure, and this is a little bit of their conceptual design. And then we put them to work actually deciding what kind of furniture should be in the career center, and we went ahead with their suggestion and ordered what they would like to see in the career center. So again, just another project of kids in an internship, but then deciding to do something beyond that as well. This particular one is just kind of showing that we have a business partnership coordinator, her name is Toni Wise, and she's had a real focus this year of adding business partners. So she's added 50 new business partners this year, and about 30 of those have joined our advisory committees. This is a picture out at McKay Spazito, and they're back working with us. We took 45 students out there from STEM and digital arts, and they learned all about the careers from McKay Spazito. And then this gentleman is actually demonstrating drone use, how to program and use a drone, which is pretty exciting to students. And then following that, so this is another example, it's not a full internship, but it was like two weeks, where they took a group of students from environmental science classes, and they taught them how to program a drone to survey a creek. So these kids actually went out and surveyed Curtain Creek. And one of the things they learned is, if you were to go out and survey that, it would take about two weeks. With a drone, you can do it in two hours. However, there's a lot of programming that happens, right, before you actually go out and use the drone. So again, it's not, this wasn't a full internship, but these kids learned so much from this experience. Another one, this is Smith Root, and you probably saw the district video, I think that Craig put together, right, on the electrofishing. So they were really interested in some of our students from Heritage Environmental Program coming out and learning how to do this electrofishing. And if you're not familiar with what that is, it's finding a way to kind of stun fish so that you can capture data in a way that doesn't injure the fish. And they're actually a DNA lab, and so you can kind of see what they mentioned. Two of the students, Jose and Logan, are actually the first high school students to be certified in electrofishing. And again, short experience, not a full internship. Again, these are just some pictures of trying to encourage more parent interaction at some of our middle schools. So this was a STEM night at Frontier Middle School, and then on the other side is the cur day. So our cur guide and specials put together an event where they have partners come in and do a panel where the students could ask some questions, and these were for eighth grade students at Frontier. This was the girls in STEM, and we had 250 young girls from fifth through eighth grade. The person who's at the speaker presenting is actually someone who trains dolphins. And she's in her early twenties and was very well received by the young ladies there. And here's just an example, we have a lot of different workshops for girls. In this particular case, we had some women come in that do soldering, and taught girls how to solder. Each one of those little areas is a little soldering kit. And then we also did our CTE showcase, which we had about 250 students showcase their work. I think I saw Rob there at that event. You did? And then these two students are actually from Hila, they're graduating seniors that have just completed one of the pathway programs at Hila. This is IQ Credit Union, who does a big financial reality fair every year at Heritage and sometimes at some of the other high schools. We know we build a house for Habitat at Evergreen, but this is some of the extended activities that they invite our students to participate in. This is the Humanity Women Build. This is an example of one of our industry tours, just at the Humane Society with our vet science class. And on the left-hand side is some of our luncheon learns. We do a lot of those at Evergreen and Heritage. This particular one, you can probably see Natalie there from S.E.H., this was for manufacturing. And then Dame Lear also came from Portland and presented at that time. So we also look at high school credit, dual credit, college credit being earned in the high school. So we did take a little dip, so we're always a year out. We had grown quite a bit in 2016-17, and then you'll see a dip, 2017-18. We lost our articulation agreements with Mount Hood Community College. We have a lot with digital arts, but they changed to a Mac-based environment and Mac software, and so our students can't really, at this point in time, articulate with them. So we're back trying to work with Clark College to see if we can get back in there. New this year, we added some credits with the Teaching Academy, the Early Childhood Ed, we took it from three credits to 15 at Clark. We added the mathematics for manufacturing. This one's really important because it's three credits towards that S.E.H. internship program, or apprenticeship program, excuse me. So students, that's one credit, or set of credits that they can waive. And then welding, it says almost there, but I'm really excited it's there. We got it, six credits. The reason I'm excited about that is this is my 25th year trying to get that credit. So, I'm not sure what this says for me, but 25 years, two districts, finally got the credits, so we're kind of excited about that. Mainly because of teacher change at Clark College. Next year, we're looking at culinary, they've opened their doors to us, and pharmacy, you heard about a couple of weeks ago. And then we're continuing to work with both Clark and LCC. We want more areas in manufacturing. We're hoping to get a course, which is professional technical writing, if we can get that. That would be another class that those students need in that apprenticeship program. Overall, we had over 2,100 students in worksite learning. And then this just kind of shows the breakdown from a year ago to this year, with internships growing a little bit, a lot more embedded worksite learning in those classes, because we added that layer of capstone classes across the top for juniors and seniors. That's where you see a lot of that electrofishing, the McKay Spazito, all those pieces. The special ed transition programs stayed about the same, and then the cooperative, where students come to us that already have jobs. This is kind of a new version of internships. So this was the one with Dame Lear Ford. So they came up with 10 potential problems, and then the supervisors over there selected two of the problems. So one of the problems was when a cab comes around on a conveyor belt, and then it's placed on the chassis of a truck, someone manually has to hold, you know, make that move. So they wanted to see about efficiency in that, that. And then the second piece was, the tanks are moved on wheels, and they're continuously stuffed, and therefore they have to continuously polish them. So they want the students to come up with a system for that. So they connected them with their vendors, you know, all the people that they worked with in Dame Lear. And they did a lot of distance learning, they went there two or three times. The students came up with a roller coaster system to move the cab. And then for the tank, because they determined that it was being stuffed because of the wheels, they came up with a vacuum system where there's actually vacuum handles, and they could actually, they showed where they could physically move the tank without it even touching the ground. So the supervisor that's there on the right-hand side, I was sitting next to him, and he was taking notes, and he said, what, what did you do? What did you do? He had him repeated, and he said, in my 30 years, I've never had such great examples of problem solving. So it was really exciting to hear that, and we want to do that again next year, so that's even better. More project-based learning, this is the Pro Start Restaurant Program. They were just having fun with a gingerbread competition. And this is, looking at middle school, our engineering kids built some toys, then they took them out to Harmony, and they actually tested them with the kids to see how well the kids liked them. At the high school level, we made some toys again through the manufacturing program and took them out to three of our elementary school special ed programs, and that was pretty exciting as well for kids. This just shows our completers, for those of you that are new, students that complete two years with us, we follow up a year later. And what's kind of exciting about that is with that new delinking belt, there is a statement about CTE pathway programs, so we don't have enough information yet that this is a possibility. These are just the students that responded to our survey, so we have about twice that amount of students that are actually completers. And then goals for next year, we're just going to keep working on the dual-credit industry certifications. The high school and beyond plan started this year in the middle school, so our cur guidance people coordinated that. The current interest assessment starts in seventh grade. The research starts in the eighth grade. And then what we did, which I think worked out really well, so really well received, we went into all the core content classes like humanities and scheduled kids for their humanities in ninth grade. So the teachers in the humanities were trained in how to help kids schedule. Then we went into math, and we went into science. Then on a separate day, we did electives. So in the past, we had this rush of, you know, like one period or two periods, 45 minutes for kids to schedule everything for high school. So now they're having more concentrated time to do that as well. Our general advisory, looking at our data, that OCR report that you have in here, the Office of Civil Rights, the one thing they pointed out was, we still have a lot of gender inequity in some of our programs, like engineering, computer science, manufacturing. So they asked us to kind of focus on that this next year, and that wasn't just our district, but all districts. One of the other things is we want to look at expanding courses in the middle school. I looked up some data, and actually, Evergreen has the highest number of students enrolled in CTE in the state of Washington, high school students. That's not true of middle school, so we need to kind of focus on that as well. We did Cascade, just took on a lot of new programs that might be interested. So STEM innovations, robotics, intro to multimedia, and game design, which will be running next year, for seventh and eighth grade students. And that is about it. Unless you have some questions for me?
I don't have a question. I just, it's kind of fun to look at all of the different opportunities that kids are having, just in their classroom experience, that capstone and getting more involvement. So I think that's been a really good program. I mean, some of these things I never even heard of, like electrofishing.
I haven't either. I have a look at that.
It proves that we're doing stuff to get kids prepared for the jobs that are going, that are going to be coming up, and I think that's great. And I also, because what you said about the gender inequality, and the things that we're doing around girls in STEM and getting them, it's been two years now that we did girls in STEM at Heritage High School. And that feels like it's a growing program, and so really good work. I think we're doing all the right things, and it's exciting. We're really amused to hear that we're leading state in CTE.
I was surprised. Kent School District is the next closest 200 FTE difference, Seattle's.
And you would think that they have so many more opportunities for internships up there, and here we are, but not, I mean, we don't even have, we're on the east side, where there's not a lot of the city, even a lot of the businesses, and we're still leading the state. That's fantastic. So who knows?
We have a lot of kids really interested in the programs, and we just have to keep keeping them current. So we're excited about it. Any other questions?
I was actually struck by the increase in enrollment in the agriculture and natural resources, until you listed the courses.
Right.
Are they, well, and we have our largest number of equivalency in science and lab science, so those dovetail, don't they?
Yes.
So we aren't just thinking about biology, chemistry, or physics, biology, chemistry, sequence for science, we've got some options that kids are really interested in and that lead into interesting, I guess, entry-level jobs, I hope.
And with that equity across the board, how we kind of found, that came to our attention as we had students at Frontier that were sitting next to each other, and I could sign up for animal science. And I could sign up for animal science, biology, which is a biology equivalent in Vet Science and Heritage, but someone sitting next to me who's going to Union could not. So the kids started asking us, now that they're more involved in high school and beyond planning, how come that's not available in the school I'm going to? And it kind of opened my eyes to, you know, kids want this. And the program actually grew by 1.7 teachers at Union because of that.
I was struck by that. With respect to course equivalency, I understand that as an O S P I process that equates the course with one of the graduation requirements. And that there are four equivalent courses for math. Do you have, or does the state have intent, do you know, to grow that, a set of equivalencies? I think of about six different ways to study third-year math. And could you talk about the process a little bit there?
Sure. So there's two processes. There are state course equivalencies that we can grab and take, or we can develop our own internally. And we've done a little bit of both. The state is actually on kind of a mission to expand that area, especially in the math area. We added the Intro to Computer Programming coming into this school year for students who could take that as an algebra option. And it's been very interesting because we piloted it at Evergreen this last year and our teacher ended up working with the algebra teachers. And the algebra teachers are starting to take some of the computer programming content into their general algebra classes to get kids more interested. So we can do either way, and we've just been adding those gradually. But the third-year math, the Skill Center has quite a few. We have, I think, two or three. We have the financial algebra, the mathematics and manufacturing.
Financial algebra and math and manufacturing. Is that available at all the high schools?
We offer it in every high school, but it doesn't always fill. Financial literacy does. The mathematics for manufacturing is a harder one to get enough students to sign up. I think we have it running in two buildings next year.
Oh, yeah. This report covers the courses, the curricular part. It doesn't include the C T S Os or other co-curricular things that are going on. So we have to talk about that separately.
Yeah. It's in that Career Connected Learning diagram. It says how many students, like, were participating in competitions and things like that. But yeah, that's a whole other animal.
Yeah.
It's very good.
I'm not going to ask those questions here today. She and I could go down the rabbit hole for it.
And we do.
Yeah. It's fun helping you.
So I, my daughter goes to York. And so she was actually part of.
Oh, cool.
The STEM program that had Union High School students come down and run the programs for them. So I thought that was very genius to have students teaching the elementary school kids. It's, she loved the program.
Good.
So we'll see if we can get it to stick.
Yes. That's good. We're trying. Trying to get more interest in that model, so.
You know what I've observed over the time that I've been on the board is a real evolution in the viewpoint of how people view C T E. It used to be, oh, dead, and it was, there was a real, let's just face it, in the school, in our schools, there was a bit of a snobbery about it, academic snobbery about it.
It's still a little.
You know, and I see, you know, now we see the C T E as academically challenging as our other curriculum. And these classes having as much engagement of our students and giving them as much opportunity for a good enriching experience.
Experience.
Experience in school and giving them something to take away from their experience here. So I really give you a lot of credit for helping that process along.
Thank you.
And I really love to hear what kids are doing and just see how these classes have evolved. And it is interesting to me to see how many different offerings there are and the things that they're doing is pretty mind-boggling, really.
It is.
Thanks, Susan.
It's gone, it's really expanded to some unique classes and areas and very timely and it's.
We'll have drones next year, so. We are starting next year.
That's a step up from building parapoles.
I know.
It's a lot, it's a lot of fun to do drones. It's a lot of fun to do the ganops too. I wanted to leave, the one last comment is just, I don't know how many people are aware, but since I work in the computer sciences and interface with companies, and my son, who has graduated this year and is, did running start, so he's getting his associate's degree too, got hired at a software firm that he was interning at for a full living wage salary. That in the computer sciences, they've stopped requiring, a lot of companies have simply stopped requiring the bachelor's degree. If you have the skills and the portfolio and maybe one certification or an internship behind you, you can get a job. That's how tight the market is.
That's great.
And so everything that we're doing to introduce the six-to-12 scaffolding that you're beginning to do is going to accrue to these kids far faster than it used to for coding, which is getting into every industry anyway. You're going to have to know how to write a program.
Well, I love it too.
Yeah.
I love being here and I love working with the teachers. They're brave. We have wonderful staff, wonderful classified staff. So, thank you.
Would you say really quickly, Susan, that not only do we lead, I mean, we lead in terms of the number of students, but we lead because of Susan's leadership. I mean, she's tremendous and viewed around the state as somebody that people look to for advice. O S P I looks to Susan. And for me, working with Susan for 19 years or whatever.
We came back on.
Yeah, we did come and say, and if you followed me, you're actually.
I am.
Not positive, but pretty sure. Yeah. I mean, we've always worked together. I mean, Susan just is great to work with, so she's done a great job.
Thank you so much.
Always has.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Here we go.
All right. Next up, Superintendent Report.
Yeah, I think Susan, weren't you going to come say a few things about me now?
I have enjoyed working with you.
Oh, no, that's fine. No, no, really, stop, please. I just want to say that we've spent a lot of time together in the last few weeks, but I just kind of talked about a few things. We had a groundbreaking image since the last board meeting, and that was a great experience. I think every time we have an opportunity to do that, it's great to hear the students speak. And also, it's really kind of cool to see, you know, for me, because I've been here more of my time than out in the buildings and doing anything, it's great to see the principals choke up, right? When they have to give their speeches and just about how much they love the schools that they work in and the staff that they work with and the kids and the opportunities that are going to be provided in these new buildings. So that was really cool to see Kathleen Keller. It's always great to see people choke up. So it was great to see Kathleen Keller try to do that. We also had our last budget forum on May 30th at Mountain View, which was, again, I mean, what was nice about that was from the first to the last forum, I think we've had six forums, we've had, you know, a lot of participation from the community. I think the fewest number of people were at that one. Hopefully, that means that the things are getting better, and I think that they have in terms of some of the conversation we've had. But we still have people advocating, tonight, we still have people advocating. We had the ability, opportunity to go through seven, have seven graduations. We got to spend a lot of time together, which was, but for me, again, it was spending a lot of time here versus being in these events. Every one of you said how this is your favorite thing that you have an opportunity to do. And it was fun for me to be able to experience that as well and see the excitement of everyone. I think the last one we had was Evergreen High School, and that was very enthusiastic. It was really, it was really cool to have the opportunity to participate in that. So we started with the Transitions Program on Thursday. We had Legacy High School, which was in the gym at Evergreen as opposed to in an auditorium because there were so many kids graduating. And then the crowds at McKenzie for the five high schools, it was, that was a great opportunity. Also got to go to a kindergarten graduation at Sunset. It was, that was interesting. I mean, there's as many balloons being presented to the kindergartners that were moving on as there were to the high school kids. And then this, yesterday, I think it was, actually had lunch with my brother and Ben Dagport from S E H. So that was good to kind of make that connection and kind of try to continue the momentum with the partnerships that we've had with S E H and with the Southwest Washington STEM Network. So it's been a good three weeks.
And just as a quick FYI, they do it for preschool graduations also, because I had one of those, and he had a big bouquet of balloons also.
Yeah. I'm glad that I have, like, actually, I have little kids too, but I'm glad that I have older kids that we never kind of had to do those kinds of things. I just feel that's another gift you have to give a kid.
And we'll have to do it again next year when he does kindergarten.
Yeah, their fifth grade graduation.
Yeah, their fifth grade, right. That's all. I mean, like, I think we should have it at Evergreen level personally. Might as well, just another gift for everybody.
Field Day, right?
What's happening?
That's Field Day.
Field Day.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all good.
It's good to celebrate.
It is good to celebrate.
We have lots of reasons to celebrate, so.
Can't celebrate enough.
That's true. Lots of, lots of things. In fact, that means it's time for, I want to segue to the good news. Right?
You know what? Yeah, I think that there's somebody here that likes to talk about good news too.
Gil's for. Thank you, Superintendent Merlino.
Oh, sure.
So it is a short good news report this time, just because we've had a short amount of time between the last, the May board meeting and June. But there's still plenty here. The photo at the top is our Evergreen Public Schools students that are part of our Connect Evergreen Youth Coalition. They had an opportunity to create a video and showcase their work during the Washington State Healthcare Authority Spring Youth Forum. The project was to address the growing problem of vaping in schools, and it earned them an award for sustainability. So not only did they produce the 92nd video, they also put together a teacher lesson that focused on increasing social competency strategies to prevent vaping. And you'll start to see that rolling out in the fall in our schools. Last time, I think last board meeting, we had the art show presentations. And so pleased to announce that Spencer Silva, a kindergartner at Ilahi Elementary, won the overall O S P I Award for Kindergarten Art. And so Spencer's artwork will be displayed at O S P I up in Olympia for the year. So very proud of Spencer.
Was Spencer the one that came here that night?
I seem to think it wasn't.
Remember the one that wouldn't answer the question?
Yeah.
Have you covered it in artist?
Yeah. No, because Spencer's art was already up at O S P I. Yeah. There's a photo here of Darlene Bennett's first graders at Image Elementary. They wrote, illustrated, and then read their books, went over to residence at Pacifica Senior Living Center. It was a great opportunity for our kids to share, and the residents enjoyed that. Moving on, because it is almost dinnertime, so the next three items are about food, just to get folks hungry. Chartwells, our great food service partner, again, hosted the Fine Dining Etiquette Program. This time it was at Millplaine Elementary with fifth graders. And so the students spend some time prepping and learning about what it's like to eat in a fine dining facility, and then they are served there at Millplaine. We always partner, of course, with our local SNAP provider and expose our students to locally-produced foods. So Ellsworth Elementary had SNAP these, this time. Silver Star has a school garden growing, and in fact, we were just talking about this as we were looking at some of the projects for our new schools incorporating community gardens. And Silver Star had a robust community garden. And of course, this is the time of year too that we have them work with the neighbors and encourage the gardening to continue over the summer. So we have some volunteers there that will continue to do the watering and the care of the garden that the students started right before school was out. And they will also harvest the produce and share it there with the local community. And finally, speaking of graduations, we have a number of folks that were part of a grant-funded program in conjunction with W S U Vancouver to grow our E L L staff members. So a number of our E L L paraeducators recently earned their Bachelor of Arts in Education as part of a cohort that we actually co-hosted here at Evergreen. So very proud of that group that you see pictured there. And that's your good news for the evening.
Thank you, Gil. All right, next is a budget update. Let's, Superintendent Merlino?
So there's the documents that I shared throughout the year and throughout several years, looking at indicators for how this school year would go. This first document is looking again at enrollment, what the estimates were for the year and staffing throughout the year. We're done, our final enrollment was the first of June. And you kind of mentioned enrollment. At the end of the day, we were within about, we had 42 more kids this year than what we had estimated. That's about 0.2% out of almost 23,000, 24,000 kids. I think that was good. I've talked a little bit about, and then the students we have generate staff that we allocate to the buildings. And then another key is working with our H R department in the building, making sure that the staffing actually stays within what we've allocated. We ended up allocating about 1,222 basic ed positions, and we were at around 1,219. So that was very successful. And the special ed is also very important for us as well, both on certified and classified side. We were, again, right about where we expected we would be in 18, 19. Now, this has typically been a pretty good indicator that we would have a good year financially. The second document that we have shared is kind of what's the estimate of where we think we're going to be at the end of the year. So 18, 19, we started right around 24.4 million, and we're estimating it will be right around 23 million this year. So a little bit of a reduction in the, any fund balance. I've said it many times, one of the first action items that Julie and Victoria and the board took in the kind of the reset that we had, which was kind of freeze spending, I think that that 23 million would have probably been more in the 20 to 21 million had that not occurred. So I think that that's positive. And I've also said many times that having the ability to have a little bit more fund balance has helped minimize the reductions a little bit, and that was part of the conversation that we've had also. So I think that while the trajectory for where we are financially got much better for us based upon some of the board actions, and I think we've had some good news after we've worked through the last few months and trying to work towards this year as well as the budget. We did talk about the last budget forum that we have, May 30th. We went through the current recommendation. We're still working on the budget. So the O S P I, when the legislation completed in April, O S P I then has to put together their work to allow us to do some of the revenue estimates. That's been done. We are working on revenue estimates. We just, within the last week, have completed, for the most, well, really kind of today, kind of given it to the point where we're completing the staffing files so that we can have the certificated staff, the classified staff, the kind of miscellaneous things that have, roll them all together. Hopefully, I'm able to in the next few days start to look at the preliminary estimates. So we built in some things but haven't made final decisions yet on some of the final recommendations that were made to the board in the forum on May 30th. But we're, yeah, I work with Tanya Gassoey, who's done this for quite a while with me. And she's like, you know, we're behind, we're behind, we're behind. And I just constantly remind her, like, at least two of the last three years, or maybe three of the last three years, the legislature hasn't really gotten done until June 30th. And so we're way further along in terms of being able to get this done. I don't think that we're going to have issues finalizing the budget, but the process typically is we'll do this work, we'll kind of make that available, something available to the community by the 10th. That's a state requirement. We will meet with the board in separate meetings in late July, early August, and then have the first actual budget hearing at the first meeting in August. I don't anticipate us being able to. I don't anticipate us being able to, I, we will be able to meet those timelines and we'll be fine, but we'll continue to work over the summer on the budget. So that's where we're at right now. I think that this year will end up better than maybe we might have expected three or four months ago, not as well as we might have expected a year ago. But I think things are going well in terms of developing the budget for 1920. And I have to answer any questions you might have. And normally I would say I'm happy to go back and sit down, but I'm sitting here, so I'm not going anywhere.
I have a question that I didn't, I didn't think to write you about, but one of the reserve items is a reservation for teacher professional fund, which I thought had been removed from the contract at the last ratification.
Yeah, so, so we don't offer the professional fund any longer because that kind of got rolled into the new salary schedule and the tribe. But there were teachers that had money set aside in their professional fund and that money remains in their accounts. I think this year, is it next year also? I think this year and next year.
I think it's just this year.
This year. So it's either this, I mean, we're basically winding that down. So teachers are being told, you have money in your reserve, you need to spend it by X date and then it will go away. So the reserve will, I think there's maybe still $500,000 in it this year. And I was talking with, I think, one of the cert specialists about this. There is a date in time where it needs to be spent, but it's still there now. They don't have the ability to put any more money in the professional fund, but the people that have reserves, balances can still spend that.
My sense of it is that it was an election process and if you didn't choose to bank money into the professional fund, it would come into your paycheck in December in the previous contract. But now you're just taking the bank money and.
Yeah, so you have the ability in the past to decide to pay yourself for work that you were performing, or you could put money into professional fund to reimburse yourself for, it could be for college tuition, it could be for books, it could have been for a number of different items. So those, but that, that was intact for a number of years. So there were reserves built up over time. Now you don't have the ability to make that choice. It's, you have your salary schedule, we have tribe, and then we have five days. The professional fund is not something that continues to be an option in the new contract.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we will go ahead and move on to board comments.
Should I start?
Sure.
I don't usually do this, but I wrote down my comments this time, so I apologize. It's lengthy. It has to do with some of the things that we've, I've been talking about with parents and, and other stakeholders about student safety. So if it's all right, I'll just read what I've written and go on there. During the first week of June, the board began receiving communication from parents and students that were motivated by rumors and claims circulating on social and mainstream media. It created an impression of inaction by the district's leadership on the matter of student safety. Students' voices have been prominent in calling for greater support from everyone involved in reducing or eliminating harassment, bullying, and intimidation. In his speech to his classmates, graduating senior Colton Solari said, "It is so incredibly easy to put people in boxes and to place imaginary constraints upon their character." Years, his classmates fight back against this and told him about an experience that moved his outlook from valuing being right over empathy and altruism and what was right. He was one of many voices calling this month for greater focus on student safety. I affirm Colton's call to action and thank him for speaking out. The emails and phone calls in the days that preceded his speech clearly illustrate the awesome depth of feeling our community has about the safety of our students. I share that feeling. We share that feeling. Some of the calls included reports of student harassment and persecution, which our school leaders must investigate and resolve. We have also received summaries of the investigations and conclusions of each of the rumored incidents and found the contrary to rumor. School principals and deans of students handled each documented complaint according to outline procedures. Our respect for the privacy rights of the victims of this treatment compel us to remind the public that the law prohibits any airing of details or resolutions without the expressed positive voluntary consent of the people involved. Virtually always, the assailant or harasser in an incident is also a child whose privacy rights exists and whose needs are as acute as the victim. Public discussion of details will not create the safe spaces and the safe places students need. However, I also recognize the limitations of handling student safety issues strictly by policy and formal procedure, in part due to the large number of incidents that are never reported. A safe, supportive school environment requires more than procedure. People at each school must look for early warning signs of problems and intervene with compassion and intent. And I'm confident that the board will continue its longstanding focus on equity, access, safety, and citizenship for all students. And I think I'm safe in inviting ongoing public influence on fees and all other matters in the public interest. So, and that came out of my own experience as a student in Evergreen Schools, receiving years of toxic stress from treatment of other kids and not understanding what to do. And this was like well before the harassment and bullying laws were ever passed. And so what to do was not known or laid out in policy or procedure. It's like, go talk to your parents and let them teach you what to do. Some of that experience is stuff that goes unreported. And in talking to parents and things, a lot of the impression that nothing's being done comes in part from students who enter the process and decide not to continue it, but also from students who don't, who carry the assumption that leaders are a force of nature. They're instead of people and can't be approached, or that they don't know how to approach them because they're behind a desk in an appointment or something and don't know how to do that. I spoke at length with a parent about it, a couple of parents, a grandparent, and we talked to a high school counselor just to get their perspective. And there's no doubt in my mind that this kind of thing is probably one of the most difficult social problems that an institution could attempt to address by policy. Fundamentally, I think we have to care about each other. We have to foster a culture of caring in all the schools in the hopes that more kids will come forward and talk about things that are bothering them and that we respond restoratively as we've directed before. That's the comment.
Well, this whole situation has been really difficult because we are somewhat handcuffed by what we can and cannot say publicly because of the rules of privacy for our students. And oftentimes, as we look into complaints, things happen behind the scenes that nobody knows about because we can't talk about what, what we're doing behind the scenes. And, and we want our students and we want our families to feel safe and, and to feel like they can come to us. And we, over the years, we have come up with different ways to report incidences. We've got our hotline that people can report things anonymously. Obviously, we want anyone to feel safe coming to adult, any adult in our buildings. We sometimes get letters to the board, or they come to us as individual board members or to the superintendent. But it is difficult, just like it is, and our schools are a reflection of what happens in our communities and in society. And we live in difficult times and, and it's, it's challenging. And if anyone even begins to think that we don't, are not aware that these issues are occurring in schools, and it's not just in our schools, it's in the nation's schools. I mean, they're, we talk to other board members in other districts and it's something that all of us worry about and are very concerned about. You know, one of the things that I hope for is as we think about our mindfulness work that we're doing with our students, you know, I, I really put a lot of hope in the fact that as we work with our children and we talk to our children and help them understand themselves better. And as we help them understand about what it's like to have empathy for others and to understand each other more, that those, that work of empathy and our equity work and the communication that they're learning and, and all of that, as they grow through our system, are, you know, I, I think our biggest hope is sometimes with our littlest kid, our littlest students, is they learn and go through the system that when they get to these older ages, that maybe they won't, they'll have better skills to, to cope. But it, it's, it's really difficult. I mean, it's, it's very challenging and never would, you know, we have a policy that we put into place that says we want our students to, to learn how to advocate for change. And one of the things that we talked about is we want them to know how to do that in an appropriate way. And never during any of this most recent incident was there a conversation about shutting down free speech or shutting down, or wanting to hide things or any of that. Because, you know, speech has consequences and there, what was very challenging as we, as all of this was unfolding, was the belief that we did not, we were trying to in some way hide a problem. We don't want to hide a problem. We want to do everything we can to make sure that any problems that might be out there, we're doing everything we can to, to help our students, help our staff. But we're also going to be supportive to our staff who are, who is doing the hard work and is there for our students and is caring and doing what they have to do every day and in a very difficult, a difficult job, dealing with difficult circumstances. And I'm going to speak for myself personally, but I think, I cannot support anything that slanders or misrepresents a situation. And I'm going to support the staff when they've been slandered. I just am not going to, so I don't know how else to put it because I just don't want to say too much about a particular student, but that's what I'm going to say.
Okay. Jenny, have anything you want to add? Rachel?
You know, I think, I was going to say, I think really quickly, we all recognize how difficult it can be as a community member, as a parent, when you see something happen and you think the administration doesn't care or hasn't taken any action. And I think we recognize though, and when we think about privacy rights and the reasons behind those, it makes sense. And as frustrating as it might be for us not to be able to fully defend someone or fully advocate for someone because of those privacy rights, think about the reasons why. And that's kind of what's helped me a little bit. Because I've been in that situation where I felt that administration hasn't taken any steps to remedy a wrong. But then I think, you know, that person to whom the wrong was done, that victim, just because something traumatic happened to them, just because they were bullied, they were harassed, they were sexually assaulted, doesn't mean that they've given up their privacy rights and should have the entire school or community know about what happened to them so that the community can know that the administration took action. And so then the administration is the one who kind of takes the flak for not doing some big outward, obvious remedy. And I think that's something that we need to remember is that the persons involved here, they're real people and they deserve their right to privacy and not have what happened to them be used as an example of showing, look at the administration being hard on somebody or appropriate reaction. But the appropriate thing to do is to follow the rules and also to really protect somebody's emotional wellbeing, I think, especially when we're talking about victims of, of something happening to them, that they don't deserve to have what happened to them made public. And the only way that we would be able to make public the consequences would be to also out them as victims. I think that's important to remember as well.
And it's a label, victim is a label. And being on the receiving end of that kind of stress stays with you for the rest of your life. Like just, it makes me thoughtful about the fact that the HIB process is a quasi-legal thing, right? You make a report, it gets written down, an SRO comes and gathers witness testimony, notes are taken, and there's a procedure, and there has to be a procedure for something like that. It's laid out in statute as far as, or the regulations. But it doesn't address the community's feeling. It doesn't, if there's anything that I tried to remember to do while watching, well, I called it a news explosion, while watching everybody's letters and advocacy for, is just to remember, this is the feeling of the community, this is the feeling of the students, is that they need a way to talk about how awful this is without violating anybody's rights. And, you know, I took some time and sat down with people I could contact or that I had a private, previous relationship with and heard their stories and heard why their kids decided not to complete the HIB process. Part of it was that it felt like a trial or that they didn't actually want their assailant to be hurt further. That it's not the solution they were looking for. And it's the, like I said, it's the toughest nut to crack. So what do we do with an institution? Well, perhaps we could be clearer about policies and safety, but at the end of the day, we have to build a culture of respect from kindergarten on up. And we know that the staff at every school have been at work on building that kind of culture and that it's going to be an ongoing process for as long as the student body changes, which happens every single year. So sometimes more often with the high mobility populations in the West Side. So, I don't know, I just think we should reassure people that we're paying attention. I don't think a week goes by that I don't think about this specific kind of thing in the student experience. And that we're open to the conversations as people happen. And I know there are people here to talk about it, so.
And I think that, Rob, I wanted to thank you for, you know, writing down those thoughts because I think that's how a lot of us are, we're feeling and feel all the time throughout the year when all of these things come up. And then also the Victoria's comments about the things that we're doing now, especially at the early ages. And I think about, a lot about how these things explode, right? It's like something happens and then within a couple of hours, because of social media and because of media outlets, it's, it's everywhere and people have formed an opinion maybe without knowing or hearing or asking maybe the right questions and finding out all of the details or all of the, all of the questions and knowing that there's all kinds of sides that are coming in on some, something like this. And one of the things, because I think social media really has been what, 10 years in the making? So a lot of our kids that are in high school now have been dealing with social media and those things their entire, entire school career, where if we can get some, now if like, and we've been doing some of our restorative work and mindfulness training at early ages now, so hopefully we can kind of combat some of that and, and get people, you know, but even adults, as they read articles, one of the things I always think about when I'm scrolling through my social media feeds is people will comment without even, just based on the headline of the story, without even reading the article and what the facts were. And so it's always important to me, as Victoria mentioned, we want our kids to advocate, we want them to advocate for themselves. want them to advocate for themselves, we want them to backface, we want them to get all of the information and then, you know, just as they would in their studies. So I think that that's important as we move forward and continue to do that work, and I think Rob's absolutely right. We take every one of these serious and we think about them every day. It's probably the thing that keeps the board up at night, and it does for myself. We want a safe environment for every student, we want our kids to feel secure and that they have a place to be when they come to any of our schools.
Just real quick, also to the point that we're not naive, our own children are not bulletproof, so to speak, for these kind of actions. I'm not going to say a lot because it's, it's actually very.
Very personal.
Very personal with my own children. So knowing that we're not sitting in our homes and not knowing some of the stuff that's going on in our schools. We have children in the schools, our own children have been victims of things that we have also personally had to deal with. I just don't want anybody to think that we don't know, because we do, and we have our own children. We have had children that have gone through, and very recently. So this is, it's a very, it hits home very close to all of us, and we take it very seriously.
The other thing that we do that I really love is, as a board, we sit down with our high school students, we have breakfast, we call it breakfast with the board, and it's been one of the most enlightening things that we do with, and we sit down with the kids, no administrators, they don't get to participate with us, and those students tell us stuff. They are not shy at all about telling us what's happening in their school, and it's, we love it, and it's something that we want to do more and more of because student voice is important to us, and we get the, we get the surveys that they do, and we watch that and see what they're saying about that. But that, those conversations are really important, and we hear about things and we get a good sense of what's happening in the schools. And kids are really honest to tell us what concerns them and why the surveys are coming out the way they are about different things. And obviously, safety is kind of one of the number one things that we ask them about is what causes you to feel safe or not safe in your school, and they, they let us know. And they also talk to us about what would make them feel better or safer. So it's, it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing thing with us, and we believe that, we know we're diligent about it, and we know our administrators and teachers are, and we're looking for ways at all times to just keep making it safer and better for our kids.
One of the things, too, one of the things that the board does throughout our work is principal for a day where we have community members go in, show our principals, and one of the things that's always struck me because when we think about probably our own experiences in school, we only knew the principals when we were in trouble. Our principals and our administrators make it a, their work to know the students that are in their school, they know by name, and so they can get on top of some of those things when they're, when they do see an issue and they have built relationships with all of those kids so they can, they can intervene and they can get in there and help.
Anything else?
Hey, hey, I said it. I'm going to support.
Well?
Can we talk about some other stuff?
We sure can.
I got asked to be on a committee at the city having to do with the naming of parks, only because they wanted some input as to how we name schools. They've had a little fluff-up about a naming of a park, I won't get into all of that, but I did suggest they do what we do, instead of putting a placeholder name on a park that might become controversial, that maybe they give it a number like what we do until they've had a chance to have a naming committee name it something appropriate. So we'll see if that sticks or not. But they thought it was a very good idea. And then.
You can tell them ES22 is taken for right now?
Yeah. But they, they just, yeah, when I said we do a number and then we go through the process and, you know, kind of told them what our process was, I said, "That will save you from any embarrassing situations." And we kind of went over that. I'm going to, this coming Saturday, be on a panel at the Juneteenth celebration, just so everybody knows, I'll be there.
Are you on the panel?
I'm on the panel. And there was something else, just that I do, you know, the usual, like Mike mentioned, all of our graduations, they went off great this year, and as always, they're really wonderful. I have, let's see here, I thought I had something else that I wanted to bring up. I've got to go through the whole schedule. And I was glad to see in our budget forum, I mean, there were still participate, participants, but people's, you know, shrunk considerably, so I think people are feeling heard. I appreciate you, you know, though, keep putting it out there and giving people opportunities to still keep being part of the process, so that seems to be working. And then, let's see here, sorry, you guys, I got so caught up in that other conversation, I lost my little list of things. And then on Thursday, I'll be meeting with the ASC committee on the interiors stuff at the architect's office on that. So if anybody has any other worries about the ASC, you know, we'd be happy to move forward, otherwise you've just got to trust my input.
Real briefly, real briefly, work on the legislative, the WASTA legislative committee took place between the last meeting and this one, and there's another meeting this weekend. We're just going through all the positions, so you've got some ideas about how last year's positions could be modified, so let me know, take it in. Take it in and be sure to advocate for the region that way.
Everything's been covered. I actually head up to Olympia on Saturday for a WASTA planning meeting. We will be going through all of the breakout sessions that have been sent up for review and deciding what sessions we'll have at our WASTA conference. Most of the day, I'm going to end up in Olympia.
Rachel, you got anything to add?
I just have two quick things. Last week I got an opportunity to do the mock interviews that were in the CTE slide, which was a lot of fun. I try to do it every year. It's a lot of fun meeting with the kids. I think I did six interviews in the hour I was there, and I said I would have hired them all, so I think that's a testament to the work that they're doing. They were great, all the kids were fantastic. And then the other thing I wanted to say was recognize Gail and her team, great to see him out there. They, y'all told me last week that they were going out to all of the schools last day to put something out, and I sure enjoyed watching all of the social media posts about all the fun things that were happening in our schools the last few days of school, so great work to your team.
And the best one was the end of it all, was it mission accomplished?
Yes.
With the white card, something.
Those were fun.
Yeah, they were fun.
They were really neat.
All right, future agenda items.
Two things.
Okay.
I'm, we've been talking offline about our retreat coming up in August or July, August, whenever, can't remember the dates.
August.
Okay. I'd like to suggest that we add to the agenda an examination of our four citizenship policy to amend the line that says appropriate, to amend the line that says advocate for change and insert the word appropriate. The second one is that I hope we do some policy development about an explicit community-facing safety policy that we write and that we include as part of the board's work for inspection, and of course, discuss what it would take to build key indicators and things that would help us understand the trajectory of school culture and present that to the community so that we can show data when we're talking about our hopes and dreams for ours.
Yeah, and as part of that conversation, too, because we had started a process to develop a student voice, some kind of a student voice piece, probably looking like some kind of a student board or committee that kind of got put on hold because of all the other things that were happening. So I'd like us to kind of talk about that during the retreat as well so we can get that up and going come the first of the year, third of the year.
I think we've got most of the research in the back on what we want, we're working on for about a year.
Yeah, because we, we love that and want to have more of that because we like our breakfast so much, but we'd like to kind of see that become more formalized, so anyway.
So student, so student voice, community, safety, student safety?
Yeah, like an operational expectation policy.
Okay. And then revisit R4 to do some rewording of that?
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody okay with taking those forward? Okay. Right, any other future agenda items? Okay, well then at this time, we will have citizen comments if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address the board. I believe we have a sign-up sheet if you, we have a sign-up sheet, Rory? We'll call you up. If you come up to the podium to address the board, you have three minutes. Keep in mind that it cannot be personal or legal in nature, and, and as a reminder, since it's not, your comments aren't on the board agenda, we're not able to respond during the meeting, but we'll have somebody follow up with you. Jessica Cole? Oh, please give us your name and address when you come to the podium, okay?
I'm actually in the address confidentiality program, so that's why I don't give it out.
Okay.
My name's Jessica Cole, and I don't live in your district, but hello, school board. I just wanted to let you know, some of my personal comments on the stuff that went on with heritage. When I went online and I looked on your policy, you know, just your, all your policies, it was hard to do on the telephone, and so I know telephones aren't the best thing, so maybe help fix that, or whoever the IT people are that do that. And also, like, one time I looked, it was like very little, and then another time I looked, it was very, a lot, so I don't know why this discrepancy on the phone. And so my recommendation, since you're going to be looking at it, is look at Battleground, Battleground's policy on PIB and all that, there's this very comprehensive, and it might be just like yours, but I couldn't tell on mine. I'm a sexual abuse survivor. I was raped in high school, but I didn't acknowledge it for 20 years, you know? I didn't have that support, so it put me on an awful trajectory. I'm grateful that Charles did speak up because I know it has gotten people to come forward that needed to, I wanted to. I know he went off script from his speech. My perception of the response from the school was that, you know, it sent the message that reporting is not okay or welcome, you know, my perception. And I'm hoping the conflict between Charles and the school was all settled, and I don't know what else he would need except for a transcript, and I don't know if he needs school for that anymore, if you do that online. I know it was very emotional, the principal's response was understandably very emotional and not enough logic, in my opinion. So if something happens like that again with a student coming forward, if there's a, sorry, a process, you guys can like double check before something like that goes out. So I can hope, hope you guys focus on what he said and stuff, how and where, which, this was written before you guys spoke. So I saw you guys on the news that you went in and talked to the students like that week, thank you. That's going to help build trust with the people that need to speak up and can't for various reasons. I'm grateful that you guys let the kids do the walk, the students do the walkout, thank you. Because of how, oh, with the word slander, I see it as a legal term where it can only be found guilty like in a court of law, so I think that was a little too strong of a word, in my opinion. So based on that, I think a personal or public apology should be from the principal to Charles, and of course, more training for the staff. Also, if you guys, you have a, like, tell how, how to report either formally to you guys or this hotline number, put it windows, I don't know, stuff for the kids to like, so they have access to it. My kids don't know how to do it at their house, school, and it's right on the wall. So I know that's, that's hard to see. And, yeah, so I think that's all. So thank you very much for addressing that, and I know you guys got slammed, and I hope this just brings awareness for everyone how to report and then get more into make it safer, so thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the board? There's no one else on the list, but is there anyone else in the audience that would like to take the opportunity? Okay, we'll see if no one else. The board will go into recess to sign papers, then we will reconvene shortly in the same room for board workshop. During workshop, workshop, we'll have an elementary boundary review committee for boundary change proposals, we'll do an alternative learning environment, board reports, legislative update, we'll get another superintendent's update, and then we'll do a board meeting debrief. Then we will go into a closed session for collective bargaining, then we will have an executive session for the review of the performance of a public employee. Thank you.